How about that one?
Honorable Chair, the payments vouchers have been retrieved.
Madam, please speak into the mic.
The payment vouchers have been retrieved and the district auditor has done their verification. And we have the payment vouchers here for auditor general to...
Have they seen the documents yet?
The district auditor for central region Cape Coast has done the validation because that's where the report came from.
Yes.
Yes, Honorable Chair.
And Cape Coast you are here, right? Then answer it, sir.
Honorable Chair, yes, we've been cleared from the Cape Coast district.
My question, have all these amounts been... have you recovered all these documents?
Yes, 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 Honorable Chair.
Can the auditor general confirm please?
Honorable Chair, the relevant documents were submitted and verified.
Thank you very much. The next infraction is on paragraph 1901. And it's on unpresented payment vouchers of nineteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-six. What has happened to these documents?
Honorable Chair, respectfully, this has also been cleared with the auditors.
They've been cleared with the auditors. And this is also from Cape Coast, right? We seem to have some... something going on in Cape Coast judicial service out there. Sir, please, don't smile on this one. It doesn't look good. Auditors, have they presented the documents?
Yes, Honorable Chair, the PVs were presented and verified.
The next infraction is on paragraph nineteen oh five. And Honorable Ahinkwa will take care of that one, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, this infraction is on unretired interest. Regulation one oh two of the public financial management regulation says that a spending officer after issuing an impress has to recover or retire the money within ten days. Here, in contravention to this regulation, it was observed that the deputy regional administrative officer of the court was granted an amount of nine thousand seven hundred and eleven Ghana cedis to perform some various activities in the house station courts. The auditors observed that those activities were performed, but the money as the law stipulates was not retired. And this is in contravention to the regulation. So auditors met the management and management told the auditors that they have identified the documents that are supporting those payments. Upon a second check, it proved that the documents were not there. They were lying to the audit service. We are guarded by law in this country. We know the criminal offenses at another related act, the law that governs it, Act nine one nine six zero. When you make a false declaration, the consequences. So why did you give a false information to the audit service?
Honorable Chair, the amount has been fully retired and it has been cleared from the district court, district auditor, Cape Coast. Thank you.
We'll come to that. The auditors are saying upon a second check, the documents supporting the payment were not there. This is what the report says. So it means in the first instance, you gave them a false information. And we know the consequences when you make a false declaration for the loss of the country. So why that falsehood? Before we come to the verification.
Honorable Chair, I think it was an omission.
Okay. Thank you, but I have some reservation. When it comes to the judicial service, we know the role you play when it comes to legality. I don't think a reputable institution like the judicial service should be caught with some of these petty, petty offenses. So what are we telling the others? If somebody appeared before your court and is caught by this, how will you treat the person?
Sir.
The... the documents.
It may be... See, you are not too sure of what you are saying, but you've sworn an oath. To speak the truth and nothing but the truth.
Honorable Chair, that is...
Omission of the statements, omission of what? Of the truth. You failed to tell them the truth. You omitted the truth. Is that what you are saying? Respectfully, let's try as much as possible to take the auditors serious. You tell the auditors, you submit documentation to them to prove what they are asking, only for them to come out later and realize that this is not it. And we tell you, say, oh, it may be an omission.
Have the auditors ver... they have verified it? Now you see why I...
Thank you, Chairman. This... infraction has to do with three staff of... the judicial service. It has to do with on-earn salary of forty-one thousand one hundred and twenty... The three, I want to mention their names, wherever they are. We have Apraku Michel Owusuwa. She earned thirty-four thousand three hundred and twenty-five Ghana cedis. Then Asante Kingsley Granting, five thousand five hundred. Then Evans Edusey, some one thousand... two hundred and ninety-eight Ghana cedis. The auditors...
Point seven four. And this has been paid into the auditor general's recovery accounts. Asante Kingsley Granting, he did not receive any salary after vacation of post was issued. So his pay slip and bank statement was given to the auditors for verification. Evans Edusey has also paid the thousand three hundred and twenty Ghana cedis into the auditor's...
To Nani office, the information given wasn't given to me. It was still outstanding.
When was your last checkup on it?
That was in August.
Madam?
Honorable Chair, regional administrative officer and the regional accountant sent this verification to us with the district auditors. So respectfully, we will have to go and validate and then get back with the auditors to finalize that.
Madam, the... what your response? Your response to this infraction, do you have the proof? Do you have any proof to what you are saying?
Yes, we have evidence of that.
Okay. You can give it to the audit. Madam, the... what your response? You have... Madam, the... what your response? So you can give copies to the auditors for them to confirm to us. Chairman, I'm done.
All right, thank you very much. Judicial services, you had discharge. Let's call Ministry of Trade.
Judicial service, I think next time when the auditors come to your end, let people at the top spend good quality time with them. Because some of these infractions that you were cited for are infractions that should never come here. So moving forward, judicial secretary, I would ask that whenever the auditors come, please, let's spend some good time with them. With them and try as much as...
Ah, can they take... Take the oath, please. Ah, can they take... Take the oath, please. Ah, can they take... Take the oath, please.
Uh, can this swear the ministry in with the agencies, please? Because we have our Ghana Trade Fair Company, Ghana Standards Authority, uh, Ghana. Can this swear the ministry in with the agencies? Enterprise's agency. And Ghana Supply Company. They limited.
Hi.
Hi.
Swear by your mighty sword.
Deputy Minister, you are welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can, can you please introduce? Yourself today.
Thank you, Chairman, Chairman, my name.
Can you please introduce?
Honorable Samsoni. I'm P for Bodi. And Deputy Minister for Trade, Agribusiness. Business and Industry.
Honorable Chair, respectfully, my name is Augustin Niemwonei. Esquah, Deputy Chief Executive Officer, Ghana Trade Fair Company.
Honorable Chair, respectfully, my name is Augustin Niemwonei. Honorable Chair, respectfully, my name is Augustin Niemwonei.
Honorable Chair, my name is Professor J. Coach Eji, Acting Director General, Ghana Standards Authority.
Honorable Chair, my name is Sammer Sakiti.
Honorable Chair, my name is Professor J, Acting Director General, Ghana Standards Authority.
Director.
Chair, my name is Sammer Sakiti.
Honorable Chair, my name is Samworld. Japanese. Deputy Director General. In charge of general service.
Uh, the Ghana Enterprise Agency, are they here? Okay, um. Oh, okay, uh, thank you, madam. We are looking at our Ghana Enterprise Agency, their financial, uh, statement, performance. We are looking at our.
What?
We are looking at our Ghana Enterprise Agency, their statement, performance. Financial, uh, statement, performance. We are looking at.
What?
Also increased by seventy four point five percent. Why?
Honorable Chair.
Also increased by seventy.
Yes, uh, the reason being that most of the funds that. Are received at Ghana Enterprises Agency are from collaborating partners. And these funds when they are received are meant for some specific activities. For twenty. Twenty twenty three, there were, uh, a lot of. Is the reason why, uh, the money that came in, uh, the money that went out was just about the money that came in.
Yeah, I see that, uh, on the grants, you had about two hundred and eighty four million, uh, in twenty twenty three, as opposed to twenty twenty. The two when he had hundred and fifty three million. So the difference was about hundred and thirty million, uh, on the grants that you got, but then when it comes to the expenditure. The expenses. Uh, went about forty three, uh, million as.
Their pro- uh, property plants and equipment.
In one year, it went up to two point three million.
Such a, in twenty twenty. Three, there were a lot of, uh, procurement respect to, uh, vehicles because of the projects that came on board, uh, Ghana Jobs and Skills Project and that of. Masa Khat Foundation, there were some vehicles that were procured and other plans that were procured. So that actually resulted in the increase in the consumption of fixed asset.
That's your non-current assets. But current assets went down, the expenses. What caused that?
Honorable Chair, like, I earlier indicated, sorry, I earlier indicated. The non-current asset is, uh, basically the P P is the, uh.
Went up by forty three, uh, million.
As their pro- uh, property plants and equipment.
In one year, it went up to two point three million.
Such a, in twenty twenty. Three, there were a lot of, uh, procurement respect to, uh, vehicles because of the projects that came on board, uh, Ghana Jobs and Skills Project and that of. The, uh, plants, uh, property plant, uh, accrual, where. The funds, part of the funds that were received from the collaborating partner. Place which are not being utilized, uh, deferred, when it's being deferred, it is pushed into the current liabilities, so. So this push the current liabilities up and that actually affected. The current issue. Collaborating partners, the money that came in which were. Were not utilized, that portion of that money was deferred. When we defer it, that goes under the current liability and this wells up the.
Money is that you did not utilize now turns into a liability?
The money is, sorry, the money is, the money is that were received, you receive it from a partner. So if you are not utilized, if that money is not utilized, you cannot realize that's earned. So that money becomes a liability to the agency, so twenty. Twenty twenty three, twenty, the previous, the subsequent year, when that money.
Is it back? How, how, so how do you treat it?
So that portion now you credit the revenue, then you debit the liability. So the revenue now goes up, then the liability portion in the current liability will go down.
Auditors, can you confirm this? Treatment?
Honorable Chair, that is, because you are preparing the accounts under IFSA's accruals. Uh, the money does not belong to them, so it has to be treated in the account as a liability. So in the assuming years, you release it, the liability will be going down and then the revenue will be going up and then the expenses will, you know, take on. So that is how the treatment is done, which is acceptable.
So in twenty twenty four, I would see, uh, monies of close to two hundred million. Because when you do the difference about equally soon, we'll take notes of that and when the accounts for twenty twenty four comes, we will look at that. But, um, um, Mr. Chair, I just want clarification on something that I am seeing here. I see under the expenditure, different components of, uh, expenses. I see specialized expenses and I see other expenses. Current Chair asked you, um, why funds coming, they are directed for specific purposes. Um, was that captured under goods and services? You give me the, um, the explanation of the various expenses, the specialized and then the other expenses. And I'm also asking whether that expenditure that saw you increasing, um, uh. The, the amount by close to seventy four point five percent was captured under goods and services.
Assuming as you release it, the liability will be going down and then the revenue will be going up and then the expenses will, you know, take on. So that is how the treatment is done, which is acceptable.
So in twenty twenty four, I would see, uh, monies of close to two hundred million. Because when you do the difference about equally soon, we'll take notes of that and when the accounts for twenty twenty four comes, we will look at that. But, um, um, Mr. Chair, I just want clarification on something that I am seeing here. I see.
Honorable Chair, and, um.
Different components of.
Expenses. Yes, the.
I see specialized expenses and I see other expenses.
Amount of one nine nine.
Current Chair asked you.
Nine six.
Why funds coming, they are directed for specific purposes.
Sorry, nine three.
Um, was that captured under?
Some of the expenditures were material and office consumable utilities, general cleaning, rentals and, uh.
You give me the, um, the explanation of the various expenses, the specialized and then the other expenses.
And transport.
Expenses of a particular program. But here you are telling us that. It's for office consumables, it's for this, it's for that, it's for utilities. So then it did not go to address, uh, that specific pay- payments of grants to people and all the other things that you mentioned. Because the auditors were specific that you saw your income go up by seventy five percent and your expenditure also go up by seventy four percent. And gladly you told us that, oh, yes, it was to, I mean, take care of a program that that income had provided. But here we are, your goods and services is speaking to something directly different from that. And then you come to the specialized expenses and other expenses, tell us what exactly, um, they are.
Madame, the, Madame, the specialized expense was, uh, one was rent and the other one.
Um, didn't you pay any rent in twenty twenty two? Because the specialized expenses is zero for twenty twenty two, but two point three million in twenty twenty three.
Yes, uh, in twenty twenty. The rent component.
But here you are telling us that.
Was paid directly under the Ghana Economic Transformation Project from Ministry of Finance. But in twenty twenty three, we have to pay from. The reason why in our financial, we don't have.
Payments of grants to people and all the other things that you mentioned.
Under goods and services, you mentioned lease also over there.
Specific that you saw your income go up by seventy five percent and your expenditure also.
So. So if there's a lease and then there's a rent, which one are we talking about? What, what, what is the lease for?
No, man, the lease, I want to look at it, but no, the lease is for the equipment that, for the cop- copies that we lease, uh, for the activities of the agency.
You see, when it comes to, um, uh, twenty twenty two, you had a deficit of six point four million. And then twenty twenty three, a, a deficit of nine point five million. So, uh, which direction are we going?
Honorable Chair, in this, uh, deficit, uh, basically, uh, as a result of the change, I mean, the movement from the, uh. Cash or partially cash basis to that of accrual. Because under the cash, when funds are received like from a partner, we recognize everything as a revenue for the year. But with this new, uh, the IFSA, now we have to defer portion of the funds that are not being used. So it is pushed under the current liability, then previous, subsequently when it's used, then we realize, yeah, we recognize it.
When did you start with the IFSA?
Or twenty, fully twenty twenty three.
Now, when I asked you earlier about, um, grants, which resulted in, um, seventy five percent increase, uh, in your revenue. You say you use it for, uh, projects. But now that we are talking about the expenses, not all of it was used for projects. What portion of it did you use for projects?
Oh, Mr. Chair, I, I, I don't have that information here, but, uh, I don't have that information here. But the monies that are being used under the, uh, collaborating. It in, uh, under the collaborating partner. Funds, these monies go under the ex- the expenses. Of the, the change.
Um, and then definition for the other expenses, please. You've given us that of the specialized expenses. And in your goods and services numbers, if clearly your projects are paid, um, under goods and services, you should have an item or two showing that. And you have the list in front of you, you have the breakdown.
Which resulted in, uh, seventy five percent increase, uh, in your revenue. You say you use it for projects. But now that we are talking about the expenses, not all of it was used for projects, what portion of it did you use for projects?
But I, I'm sorry, if, if you can, ask the question.
I asked for the definition of, and I'm saying, give me a breakdown of the other. I asked for the definition of, and I'm saying, give me a breakdown of the other expenses. What it, what it entails.
Honorable Chair, I, yeah, um, um, I'm, I'm sure the, the auditors might have put some figures together because if you look at my financial statement, financial statement, under expenses, I have compensation, I have goods and services, I have specialized expenses, I have grants, then consumption of fixed assets, so.
There's, there's no, um, line item called other expenses.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have that one.
And that is seventy seven million. So, um, you have the specialized expenses as two point three, your goods and services as, uh, hundred ninety nine point seven million Ghana Cedis, and then the other expenses. So anything found outside the specialized expenses and goods and services will be the other expenses. So then let us know what the others entail. Anything that falls outside specialized expenses, which you've explained to us, the goods and services, which you have also done. And so all the others, um, I am sure will constitute other expenses. So if you can translate that for us.
Honorable, Honorable Chair, uh, from my financial, I have grants standing alone, uh, as, uh, item thirty eight, which is the seventy seven eight one seven six four six point eight four.
Uh-huh, so this is going to buttress what you told us, that, um, some monies came in and then you used it for a project. The grant is a project. So that is why we're asking you to let us know which project did you spend, the specialized incomes that came in?
Yes, grants, but as part of the, possibly, as part of the goods and services, we have, uh, consultancy expenses, which is basically the consultants that were engaged under the project. The Ghana Economic Transformation Project, uh, the, this Ghana Jobs and Skills Project. So the payment falls under the project.
I, 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 I get that, um, so then now I know that the other expenses had to do with grants and then other expenses. That's why I wanted to prove further, to find out exactly what the other expenses entail. And now it's been confirmed that you used that to pay, um, grants. Uh-huh, so this is going to buttress what you told us, that, um, some monies came in and then you used it for a project.
Okay, now, uh, uh, yes, sir.
Chairman, thank you very much. One quick observation, if you look on your income side, the first line item there, you find a non-tax revenue. In the, in the financials, you find non-tax revenue. There was, there seems to be a sharp decline in that. That is about forty percent. What constitutes that? And does that have any effect once it starts declining that way on the operations that you do?
Honorable, Honorable Chair, the non-tax revenue is, uh, a composition of, is a composition of, uh, goods and services and and foreign, foreign exchange gains. Yes.
And that seems to be declining. The gains you make from foreign exchange seems to be declining. Because it declined by forty one percent between twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three.
Honorable Chair, it's, uh, it's dependent on the foreign currency that you will receive here.
Okay, now let's move to the management issues. And it's on paragraph twelve seventy five. Honorable, Honorable, I will take care of that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This infractions is basically failure to serve bond after a steady leave with me. And then the auditors have recommended that an amount of forty two thousand two hundred and fifty four be paid into auditor general's recovery account of interest. Can I please know the status of this?
Honorable Chair, I said now, uh, an amount of thirty two thousand seven hundred and sixty nine Ghana Cedis has been paid with, uh, outstanding of nine thousand four eight four point eight zero.
Auditors, can you please confirm to such amount?
Honorable Chair, an amount of thirty two thousand seven hundred and sixty nine has been recovered, leaving a balance of nine thousand four hundred and eighty four point eight zero, as he indicated. Thank you.
So when is the rest? When are you paying the rest? Is, is Samira in the country? Is she in the country? When are you paying the rest of the money?
Samira is not in the country, but we are still following up to retrieve the
Method, did you use to retrieve the thirty two thousand plus?
We wrote follow-up, follow-up letters to her and then we were constantly calling her on phone and then giving her reminders officially. So that prompted her to come and pay. But we are still using the same method to retrieve the nine thousand.
Just, just, just so we are informed and, uh, we get to understand how to handle this matters in future. Um, in the, in the response you gave to the auditors, you made claim that you wrote to the Ministry of Foreign Affairs. The ministry directed that you engage the N I B authorities. Did you do that? And is it that which triggered Samira to pay back the money? We want to understand the method that you used in doing that because we get this, um, infractions a lot.
Honorable Chair, yes, that rightly so. We initially went, when we realized that she was not in the country, we went to the Ministry of Foreign Affairs, if we can and get some assistance, but they referred us to, um, N I B. So they, there was a, um, we had a meeting with her lawyers.
But keep on following up and then let's see how it goes. But I don't know why we are doing this to Madagana. If government spends this on you to pay, I mean, you're on, you're on steady leave. Save bond has become an issue and then they leave. Why are we doing this to Madagana?
Does she have any guarantees?
Yes, Honorable Chair.
And what role are they playing in the recovery of this amount?
Honorable Chair, we got into contact with them. So I think with our standing, we'll still get in touch with them for them to support us to pay.
Okay. Madam, you, you seem to be complicating the matter. Um, we are happy that there, there's been some recoveries. Are there timelines? We need full payment at their time. Because once you are in contact with her, um, you've spoken to the lawyers, there's some commitment coming from. Are there timelines? What is it that you have agreed with Samira Hussein to be paying, uh, I mean, this debt? We want to understand that.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. I think in respect of recovering the remaining a little of nine thousand, the lawyers we have spoken to on behalf of, uh, Ms. Samira, they are giving the indication that from their side, they think they've paid up to a certain point. So we should give them some time to reconcile with their payment receipt and get back to rest. And as recent as I think Thursday or so, we wrote a letter back to, uh, Ms. Samira through her lawyers. We are yet to get a definite response from that, uh, letter.
Ms. Samira, if you are hearing us, even legal fees alone is more than the nine thousand. Your name should not be appearing in audit reports. So please kindly do the needful. Japan money is plenty. Come and pay this money so that, uh, we are all free. Thank you.
Uh, you said you got in touch with the lawyers when?
Okay, so, uh, that was Thursday, the last time we got, last week, Thursday.
Okay. We need for you to follow up and keep the auditors updated on this. Because at some point, we'll have to draw the curtain and collect the money from one of you. It's just that simple. Okay, uh, Ghana Enterprises, uh, Agency, you are done. Uh, the next one is Ghana Trade Fair Company. Are you here? Okay, Honorable Abna, Osayasari will, will take care of that. But Trade Fair, we have an issue from five years back. Five years back? We'll talk about that later.
You've spoken to the lawyers, there's some commitment coming from. Are there timelines? What is it that you have agreed with Samira Hussein to be paying?
Yeah, thank you, um. So let's, let's go to your income and expenditure. And then I see a huge increment of forty million from a million, um, in twenty twenty two, your revenue was one point one million and in twenty twenty three, forty one million. Can you tell us what necessitated that huge revenue? We all want revenue, but yes, we want, uh, to find out exactly how you came by the forty million increment.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. This was an amount one of the developers, actually, we are aware, three phases undergoing redevelopment. And we have developers on site who are together supporting us in carrying out the redevelopment. So one of them was, uh, the contract agreement we had with the contractor. He was supposed to remit some money to us, which have been, which we have agreed with them to pay in tranches. So the first tranche was supposed to have come in twenty twenty three, in the second quarter. So that was what caused the sharp increment in the revenue.
And what was this, um, bits of revenue paid for?
It was meant for us to, for them to is actually a, a tech company. They are supposed to put in
Have you put the infrastructure, the IT infrastructure in place that you know the, the amount paid you?
Honorable Chair, we are not supposed to do that. We are supposed to, they are supposed to pay us the money, then they put the IT infrastructure into the developer. So when the lot is handed over to the developer, it's part of the commitment and the leasehold sum that is supposed to come to us.
So, so who, who are supposed to, who are those supposed to put in, um, the infrastructure?
The infrastructure is supposed to be, is the developer is the one who is supposed to do the I A D C, African Data Center.
Okay, so, um, they have paid forty million. So the forty million was for what?
That was the first installment of their contract sum.
First installment of their contracts and what contracts?
Uh, Honorable, uh, the, the first tranche of the leasehold
Because you said something different. You said it was for infrastructure. And I'm asking you, after taking the forty million, have you done the infrastructure? But you are now saying that it is for, the first, uh, tranche was for the leasehold payment to give them access to the place to put in the infrastructure. So let's, let's be coherent in, in, in this. And then, um, since you got the money, uh, you had other incomes coming in. So for twenty twenty three, your total income was forty five point nine million Ghana Cedis. And then I saw your direct expenses, operating expenses go up by a hundred percent. Yeah.
Yes.
Actually more than that, but I'm being, yeah.
Yes, rightly so. Uh, as the development manager or sitting down without carrying out our mandate.
So what exactly were you doing that caused your operating expenses to move by a hundred percent?
We were still
They have paid forty million, so the forty million was for what?
That was the first installment of their contract sum. Uh, we have, uh,
What contracts?
Uh, Honorable, uh, the, the first tranche of the leases, the first Training and stationary, which was twenty two thousand. We had publicity and advert.
Different. You said it was for infrastructure. And I'm asking you, after taking the forty million, have you done the infrastructure? But you are now saying that it is for
That is always the
The leasehold payment to give them access to the place to put in the infrastructure.
We have communication expenses, thirty five thousand six hundred and forty.
So for twenty twenty three, your total income was forty five point nine million.
Then we have entertainment, forty thousand two hundred Cedis.
Direct expenses, operating expenses go up by a hundred percent.
Then press allowance, forty three thousand. Public relations expenses, twenty thousand eight hundred Ghana Cedis.
So what exactly were you doing? That caused your operating expenses to move by a hundred percent? You have communication allowance, you have, so you have you have seen some monies and so so your, your, your expenses should go up because this is different from your Let me also spend some.
Sorry. Honorable Chair, that is not so. It's about the number of events we organize.
Money, you hide more staff.
Yes, some, we, we, we got additional staff.
Okay, so in twenty twenty two, what were your, and then in twenty twenty three, twenty three?
Honorable, Honorable, in twenty twenty, just six, in twenty twenty, just six.
Twenty twenty three?
Twenty twenty three, our number went up to thirteen.
To thirteen?
Yes.
Six to thirteen. So, uh, we move to and when you made an income of forty five, it also increased to three point six million. You have communication allowance. So it tells you, you see money, you spend money. Because you haven't been able to tell me exactly what, when I ask you to mention
Honorable Chair, no, it's not, it's a PPP arrangement. So we have a developer who is constructing that for the company and in intent, who swap land on lease for him to also develop to recoup.
That, that's how come you get the monies in your account and you spend and
So first we have music provided. We bring in artists, we engage DJs to then we also to have the cultural beat also there to, uh, make the place exciting to attract the general public to visit the fair ground. Or derivatives to also make some sales. To have the cultural beat also there. We've been organizing dances there. The last time we were at the Ghana International Mall on at Ableja, we were there. Coming on twenty first of, uh, uh, September every year, we organize Osajifu made in Ghana. We have not been, been working now. Uh, mandate, we still go out and carry it out.
So i- is a place such that you can't hold events there?
No.
At all?
Yes, it's a construction site now. September every year, we organize Osajifu made in Ghana.